Mayor Steam.
Present.
Councilmember at Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one, I need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
What additions?
Oh, plus the addition. And the addition, council doesn't have the addition, but we're going to put Solomon Paul on, being appointed to the honorary council member and the police commission on tonight, so that will go under the consent agenda. So when we approve this, we're approving that also. Does anybody have any questions on that?
And Elaine Hansen under recognition.
Oh, and Elaine is going to present to us.
So moved with the addition.
What's that?
So moved with the addition.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Item number under, where are we, in the public hearings?
Well, number two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approving minutes.
I jumped to four right away. Okay, we need a motion approving the minutes from May 6, 2019.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Under recognition and awards, we have, well, we're missing one. Lieutenant McCormick is actually not going to get promoted till next week, but we will start with the Ellis Robotics team. Mr. Fritz, the coach, why don't you come on up here and tell us a little bit about it? I'm sorry we're a week, a meeting late. We should have had you in the last time. That's my fault. I guess I just wasn't as aware of it as I should have been. I apologize for getting all you young guys in here a week late. It certainly doesn't diminish the recognition of what you guys have accomplished.
Right. Well, we're so thankful for you guys having us and recognizing us. I'll just quick, make a few comments about the season. First of all, we have two teams at Ellis. We have a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team, and both teams just did a wonderful job, outstanding job this year. And for many of them, especially the eighth graders, have been at it for quite some time. Some at Lego Robotics and elementary level, IQ.
Can I, I'm going to ask you to introduce them, but I have, can I just read off some of the things that they've got from this meeting?
Yeah.
At the Minnesota State VEX Robotics Tournament, they earned the following. Excellence Award, highest award given for VEX for an outstanding competition robot and program. Minnesota Skills Champion, solo robot competition. Number one ranked team in Minnesota with 29 points. Ninth ranked team in the US and 29th ranked team in the world. Tournament Champions, Minnesota State Champions. Teamwork Award, and defeated US National Champions, 19 to 10. Fifteenth place in their division after qualifying. It goes on and on. Selected by the seventh ranked team, Taiwan, to form ranked team alliance, lost to eventual world champions. So this isn't just a regional tournament. I mean, can you kind of tell us what this all was?
Right. First of all, VEX is a, it's a platform or robotics kit, and everybody's with VEX Robotics, everybody, every team is on the same playing field. They have the same equipment. You can't incorporate other parts and other pieces from other kits. And so they're all using the same parts and pieces to compete against other teams. And so that's what VEX is. The game this year was a little bit, it was a little more difficult this year to, first of all, make it to the state level, because in previous years, they allowed more teams to be able to make it to state. And so just being able to make it to the state tournament is a big deal.
How many teams are in the state tournament? Approximately?
There was about, was it 60?
Yes.
Okay.
60, 64 teams. And so out of 64 middle school teams, we were able to win the championship. We were one of three teams representing the state of Minnesota at the world competition. It was us, a team from Southland, and then also a team from Mankato. And so to be able to do that was a huge task. And not only just winning the state championship, but this team also won the state excellence award, which is an award that's given to by VEX, and they say, they claim that it's the highest award given by them, because it not only includes the robot, the performance of their robot and the programming of their robot, it also includes just the engineering behind it and how they've gone from point A at the beginning of the season to their robot at that time at the state tournament. And also, they also look at team dynamics when awarding the excellence award. So they also won the excellence award. They were tournament champions. And then they also won the state skills competition, which is how, what their robot does on the playing field by itself, which is a testament to our, everybody on the team. The drivers, the programmers, to be able to get as many points on the playing field on their own is a huge, is a huge task. And so we won all three, and that qualified us for the world tournament.
Excellent. And where was that at?
That was in Louisville, Kentucky.
Okay, so that was fun, too, right?
Oh, yeah, that was fun. It was a fun week.
Good, you deserved it, yep. Do you want to introduce, or let the kid, let the young guys and girls introduce themselves to us?
Sure.
I got to tell you guys, you got the community really excited and behind you on this, so it's not, I know you're at school and people talk about it, but the whole community is talking about you guys doing such a good job, so.
Well, let's have you guys do this. We'll have you introduce yourselves, and then they'll explain what their main task was on the team. A lot of their tasks do mix and blend together, but for the most part, they all have an assignment and a job on their, on our team. So let's do that.
I'm Jack Lang, and I program the robot. So I have to do autonomous, which is a section before, so there's two sections in the game. There's driver and there's autonomous. And autonomous is just where the bot is programmed and it goes by itself without any control, and I do that.
Okay. I didn't even know they could do that.
I'm Riley, I'm Riley Eastfold, and I'm a builder, so I help build the robot.
I'm Owen Carroll, and I drive the robot in the matches, and I build.
Hi. Hi, my name's Catherine Diaz, and I'm, and I am in charge of the injury notebook. So the injury notebook is the notebook they usually get in the beginning of the season. They give it to every team. It's for when you document your robot's process, like Mr. Fritz said, you get from point A to our current robot. So I document our robot's changes and the problem solutions we have during our season.
Wow, okay. Yeah, we're learning a lot right now.
I'm Emma Haugen, and I am a driver and a builder. We actually have a split control. Me and Owen share driving, so he controls the wheels and our spinner on our robot, and I control our puncher that punches the balls.
I'm Thomas Fritz, and I scout. So I look at the matches, and I analyze the robots, and I look at if our robot would work good with us. And I also go around to our teammates and our opponents and look at their robots, see what we can do with that information.
Let's scout.
My name is Andrew Keenan, and I do lots of community outreach and just kind of document when we have interviews and then help with the interviews.
Is that it?
That is it.
Council? Well, I think we've. These kids are going somewhere. Oh, really, seriously. And I'm glad you explained everything, because, I mean, but let me ask one question at the end, when everybody's done with the competition, do they all want their robots fighting tip each other over? That's what most of us all time.
That would be neat.
Well, thanks, guys. You provided a lot of enjoyment for us. And try it. We're proud of you. You don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting. That would be torture for you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we at now? Oh, Dr. Meyer. Dr. Meyer has served on the Police Civil Service Commission for 14 years, and we have a plaque I would like to give to Dr. Meyer. It says, "With honor and deep appreciation for your leadership and years of distinguished and unselfish service given to the Austin, the City of Austin Police Civil Service Commission, Dr. J. Douglas Myers, February 7, 2005 to May 18, 2019. Thank you for your years of dedicated service." Give your hand.
You have to know that school administrators always want to talk, you know, on the, when we get up here. First of all, I've enjoyed the experience all of these years, and I've been impressed with the quality of the folks that occupy the police department, particularly the new recruits. Every one of them that I interviewed over all those years talked first about service. That was their real reason in wanting to join the police department. So I think we can commend them for their work. I also want to mention that you have a valuable employee in Trish. She's the right hand of the commission and had things always organized and ready. I enjoyed working with Brian Krieger and now with David. And again, I'm comfortable that the, our police force is in good hands. I want to mention, too, that my wife Judy's here with me.
In the back.
And we believe in service. We try hard to, even though at our age, we laugh at each other a lot, but we, a lot of people help us over all the years here in Austin and where we grew up and other places. And so in a way, we're kind of paying back over all those years. So we think our work has been good, and we're not done. We're involved in other things in the community and try in a lot of different ways to be of service yet. So again, thank you for the opportunity and the privilege. I welcome the new commissioner.
To me.
You may take the plaque. And you've promoted two police chiefs, basically all the captains and sergeants we have on the department right now. And I want to mention, too, Dr. Meyer is retiring. He's doing, you know, he's had his fill, but you could have been there for as long as you wanted, because we were very happy and proud to have you there.
Thanks. I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you.
Chief.
Brian was here, he would echo these thoughts. Dr. Meyer was an incredible steadying force over the past 14 years on our commission. The City of Austin does have a civil service commission that has an incredible amount of input in both our new hires and our promotional process. Again, it does give three citizens the ability to help select those officers that are going to work for our department. He will be sorely missed. We're excited to be welcoming Solomon at the same time and have Solomon's input in the process. But again, Dr. Meyer's did an incredible job for us over 14 years. I know we've talked before about the amount of hiring we've done, so I think it's one of those jobs that got a lot busier, especially in the last four or five years, and perhaps the doctor, you know, appreciated, but we always appreciated what he brought to the process. And again, we will miss him, and the city will miss what his input was for our police department. So thank you.
Thank you. Always to say, too, it isn't just promoting and stuff. They also have to do a lot of the hard stuff, disciplining and things like that, and you really need people like Dr. Meyer when you start talking about stuff like that, and we were very fortunate to have you for the time we did. Next, Elaine Hansen from the Chamber of Commerce would like to address us.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and great friends here at the city. The Chamber of Commerce in Austin is very lucky to have a wonderful business community, but also is a big part of it is all the ways that the community works together. And tonight, I just want to present a certificate to the City of Austin in recognition of 30 years of outstanding support, dedication, and commitment to really helping to build us a better community. We really appreciate our partnership with the city and know how fortunate we are at the Chamber to have really good representation and interaction with the city. So thank you very much for everything you do for the Chamber, the business community, and Austin as a whole. Thank you.
Well, the Chamber is a valuable asset, and I think, you know, coming in as I did without any business background, I've learned a lot from Sandy over the years, and he was a voice of, one of, you know, very influential in a lot of the things. I learned a lot from him, and I'm sure the other council has. And I know, we know it's a tough time for business right now, and anything we can do to help our businesses, we'd certainly more than happy to. And I think you do, you know, I know you're new at the Chamber, but I think you, everybody thinks that you stepped right in and are doing a really good job, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right?
Thanks, Elaine.
All right. Now we are to the consent.
Public hearings.
No, we can't.
Oh, excuse me, consenting.
We have to do the consent agenda, and our last additions were Solomon Paul is going to be on there and appointed as our honorary council member. Did we say we're going to do June, July, and August because, or I don't know how we're going, what's the term?
Yeah, that'll work.
Or should we just keep to three months like it was? He wasn't here last week, and somebody mentioned above, I don't care.
We'll give him a bonus.
We'll give you a bonus meeting, all right? And also, he's going to be replaced, well, Dr. Meyer can't be replaced, but he's going to be on our police commission. We feel he's placed within our community where he can be a valuable asset to the city there. So does anybody have any questions about any of this? If not, we need a motion for the consent agenda. Number four.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. Number five, under public hearings, is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from James O. Reinhardt and Kathleen G. Wensel. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. We've got a new single-family home in the Nature Ridge subdivision, estimated value of $365,000. That's in conformance with our standing policy. Council action is requested to approve. The resolution needs to be modified slightly to add change from six months to one year to commence the project.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for.
It is a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, a public hearing. Anybody here to address the council? Are the Wensel and Reinhardt here? You don't have to be. They don't really need to be, obviously. Okay, if nobody has anything, council? We need a motion to approve or, a resolution to approve or deny.
So moved.
Approve?
Approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Six is a resolution reviewing tax abatement applications from Bigelow and Lennon Construction. Craig.
Similar, this is another one in Nature's Ridge subdivision, $284,900 on the estimated value. It is in conformance with our adopted policy. Council action is requested to approve the resolution with the modification of the six months to one year.
Councils, public hearing, anybody care to address the council on it? If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny.
Make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Angela Hansen. Craig.
Yeah, another single-family home at 2003 12th Avenue Northeast, estimated value at $300,000. This is in conformance with our adopted policy, and we'd ask the same amendment from six months to one year. Council action is requested to approve it, and this is a public hearing.
Council, anybody here wish to address the council on this? If not, we need a resolution for number seven to approve or deny.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Cedar City Builders. Craig.
This property is at 1307 18th Drive Northeast, estimated value of $339,000. It's in conformance with our existing policy. We need to make the same amendment adjusting from six months to one year. It is in conformance with our adopted policy. Council action is requested to approve, and it is a public hearing.
Council, council has nothing. Anybody here wish to address the council on this? If not, we need a motion to approve or deny.
So moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine, under bid openings and awards, is three resolution receiving bids for Turtle Creek Flood Control Project. Mr. Lang.
Yes, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk about A, B, and C all at the same time, get a full idea of the total cost of the project. All right? So as council is aware, we've been working for the past five, six years on a flood mitigation project along Turtle Creek. Through that process, there was a long permitting process to get approvals from FEMA, DNR for our project. Those are all in place at this time, and we are, the next step is moving forward with construction. So we have bid this project, and we opened bids on April 30, and we had one bidder on the project. Reiner Contracting was the bidder at $4,883,280.67. That was about $400,000 over our estimate on a $4 million project. So we have been reviewing different things, looking at where we're at with grant dollars for this project. So we have a breakdown there in the bottom part of your memo, kind of talking about how all the costs for this project will be broken up. It's, as we've talked about before, there's kind of three separate areas for this overall project. One project neighborhood is located at 21st Street and 7th Avenue. Those costs for that total area are broken up 50% DNR and 50% local option sales tax. We also have another neighborhood area at 18th Street and 10th Place Southwest. Again, those costs are broken down 50% DNR and 50% local option sales tax. And the third area is the Sacred Heart area. In that case, DNR grant funding is not available for that portion of the project, so it would be 100% local option sales tax. When we break that all out, for a total project, we're looking at about 48.5% is DNR grant eligible, and 51.5% is local option sales tax. When we compare the dollars available versus the DNR grant eligible items, they come out very close. So we're sitting pretty good there with available grant dollars for the construction portion of the project. And also likewise, when you compare what we have in the bank so far for local option sales tax, we're up around over $4 million, and the local option sales tax portion is 2.5 million. So with that, we would recommend for this project, we've also, we've had Reiner Contracting in town before, working on flood mitigation work. They did multiple phases on the North Main Flood Control Project, so we feel that this project is right in their wheelhouse. They do very well with soil work and things like that. We think this project will fit good for them. So we would recommend awarding this project to Reiner Contracting. As we move on to item 9B, as part of the work, we will need to oversee construction, make sure that the contractor is building it in accordance with the plans and specifications, making sure that they're using proper materials and all that material testing that goes along with that. So we have a proposal to hire Bolton and Mink. They were the designers on the project. They're the people we've been working with over the past six years to develop this project, have a great deal of intricate knowledge related to the ins and outs of what is needed on this project. So they have given us an hourly estimated price of $284,239 to oversee construction administration, onsite construction inspection, staking, and also all the closeout records that go along with making sure that we're in compliance with those FEMA requirements. So when incorporating that or breaking that down using those same percentages, we have $137,855.92 that would go toward our DNR grant, and the remainder, the 51.5% of the cost would go to local option sales tax. So we would recommend awarding this to Bolton and Mink. And then items 9C, there is additional special inspections that are required outside of what the city can do and outside of what Bolton and Mink can do. There's a special soils testing that is done by a soils engineer. We hired this same soils engineer, American Engineering and Testing, to do soil borings on the project to understand what is underneath the ground and how the project would need to be designed. So we'd like to hire them again to do the final soils inspection and inspections during construction for some of those special inspections and also materials testing. They've given us an estimate of 700, excuse me, $7,515 to do that work. So at the bottom of this third handout, 9C, you can kind of see how everything breaks down. When looking at, when applying the 48.5% to all of the DNR grant eligible costs, we have eligible costs for the DNR grant of just over 2.5 million, and we currently have over 2.3 million in place, so there's a little bit of a shortfall there. I'll get to that in a second. When we look at the local option sales tax funding for this project, 51.5%, we're looking at $2,667,237, and we have available money in the bank for that. So getting back to the DNR grant, we have touched base with our contact at the DNR, and we have about a $180,000 shortfall here, and they have funds available that we'll be working with them to amend our grant, to incorporate additional dollars to cover that DNR shortfall. So we've been working with them, that we'll bring that forward to a future meeting to cover that, and that should put us in position to go through construction on this project.
Council, any questions or comments? If not, we're going to start with, we need a resolution for A, awarding the bid.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second, B, we need a resolution approving engineering, construction, inspection, and administrative services. Need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine, C, we need a resolution approving material testing and special inspections. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten, under petitions and requests, ten is a resolution revising the city's investment policy. Mr. Dankert.
From time to time, the city reviews our investment policy and makes sure that it's updated as best we can. Last time we did, that was in 2009. There are only certain things by statute cities and municipalities can invest in. For example, we can't invest in Hormel stock, Google, anything like that. Statutorily, there are only certain things we can invest in, which primarily includes government securities. So what we've done is we've amended our policy under section B to allow for eligible instruments to include language for other issuers to include other US agency securities, because at times, other government agencies come out with things that we can't even imagine that would be too specific in our policy. So at this point in time, we request approval of a change in our investment policy to allow for such.
Council, if council has nothing, we need a resolution for ten.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution approving a first amendment to contract for private development with Fox Point Townhomes. Mr. Dankert.
Fox Point Townhomes and the Austin Housing Redevelopment Authority have approached us about amending or extending the completion date on their contract for private redevelopment. This is for the 38-unit townhome project, a four block townhome project out just north of Walmart. That's, people are already moving into it. But the current contract for private redevelopment has a June 1, 2019 date that everything has to be done, but because of the strange winter rain season we had this year, they requested to be able to push that back to August 31 so they can ensure they can get everything done on time. So we just request a resolution amending that kind of. we just request a resolution amending that contract for private redevelopment, much like the HRE is going to do.
I think we can all understand what happened. Okay. Council, you have anything? If not, we need a resolution for eleven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution granting a transfer of hard liquor on sale and Sunday on sale for Bella Victoria Italian Cuisine LLC. Ms. Kiesel.
Yes, Bella Victoria is going to be moving out into the old Target strip mall area, the independent strip mall, and we need to grant them their new liquor license with their new address change. They're not going to be moving until June, but we have to do this ahead because we have to approve ours, and then it has to go to the state level to be approved also. So, we're getting ahead of the ball here so they can get everything ready before June.
Thank you. Now, if council has something to add or ask, we need a resolution for twelve.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution approving engineering, construction, inspection services. Mr. Lang.
Yes, we are gearing up for a large construction season this year. We had our, we've gone through a lot of turnover in many departments in public works, but we had a good staff of four engineering technicians in the engineering department. So, again, gearing up for a big construction season, and then this spring, we had two of our four engineering technicians leave. Both of them left to go work in Dodge County, which is for both of them a little closer to home for one reason. So, that puts us in a bit of a bind for this summer. We were right in the middle of bidding many of our projects. Many of them were already bid, and so then it cut our inspection staff in half. It was also a little late in, for timing to try to look for consultants that would have people available, because they're in the same position as us, where they're already planning for summer. They have jobs lined up and things like that. So, we reached out to three different consultants and asked them if they had folks available to assist us this summer, and one of them got, was able to. They shuffled around some projects. They had some projects delayed, and so we have found someone that we can hire as a consultant for the course of the summer to give us a little stopgap measure here to help us while we're trying to fill these two open positions. We typically don't hire consultants to do our normal street reconstruction program, so this is a little bit unique for us. We hire consultants like we did for the flood control project for some of that specialized work. But, in this case, with our shortage that we have, we feel it's important to keep these projects going and not fall behind. So, we have a proposal from Bolton &amp; Mink to provide us a summer inspector that would start around June 1st and carry through the end of October, or as long as we needed them. If we were done before the end of October with all of our projects, we could cut them loose a little bit early. But, they have provided us a proposal on an hourly basis of $118 per hour for this staff person and all the equipment that they may need and all of Bolton &amp; Mink's overhead that they incorporate into that for that five-month construction period. So, based on our workload that we have, and we don't want to cut things short with inspection and have failures in the future with any of the construction methods, we feel it's important to have a city representative there onsite watching what's going on. So, we would recommend awarding, extending a contract to Bolton &amp; Mink for this, these inspection services.
Any possibility we'll have, are we going to, are we going to be able to replace these two people, and is there any possibility that'll happen before this project is over?
Right. So, we went out for applications, and we received three back. We looked through them. We did not interview any of those three applicants. Since then, Trish, Human Resources Department, has been kind of scavenging, looking for other options. We do have a couple interviews set up. It would be our goal that we would still hire one of the replacements this summer, work through this summer to get them trained in, and then look to hire the fourth person maybe next winter to make the position, the positions whole again.
But, until that's done, we may have to do more of these, hiring, you know, inspectors to finish our projects?
Um, this one inspector should cover us for the summer. Yeah, that should cover us, and then hopefully we get another one in to train, and then we'll be on board and be ready for next year.
Okay. Council, any more questions? If not, we need a resolution for thirteen. So moved. Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fourteen is a motion in ordinance reviewing an ordinance for annexation in Lansing Township. Ms. Wallace.
I'm just going to put this map up for reference for the people in the audience. There we go. Okay. This annexation matter has been before the council, before. The property that we are looking at annexing is located in the northwest, or adjacent to the northwest city limits of Austin. The property is owned by Vern and Virginia Carrot. They requested annexation of this property into the city initially in July of 2017, along with a property located in Austin Township. The property in Austin Township was annexed. In September of 2017, the Carrots brought a petition for joint annexation for the subject property. At the time, we included an additional property to the east, which is indicated that it's in Lansing Township. It's owned by Mara Murphy. For planning purposes, we included both in our proposed joint annexation petition. It was approved by the city council, was denied by Lansing Township. We came back, the Carrots came back and asked again if they removed the Murphy property from the joint annexation proposal, brought that to Lansing Township, did not come to the city. Lansing Township, again, denied the joint annexation petition. Then, in discussing with Carrots what options they might have to bring that property into the city, as they wished, we've determined that the property meets the criteria for annexation by ordinance. Therefore, the Carrots did petition to bring that property in by ordinance. The subject, again, borders the city limits on the northwest. The property is included in our future land use map for industrial development and would be zoned I-1 light industrial. The annexation of this property complies with our 2016 comprehensive plan, which requires that the city promote growth consistent with our comprehensive plan, which includes planning for future industrial and business parks based and extension of utility services, recruiting new target industries that foster a strong diversified economy while providing living wage jobs, and building capacity and maximizing the community's readiness for economic growth. Under Minnesota statute 414.033 subdivision two parents three, the city may annex land by ordinance under the following circumstances: the land of Buttsley municipality, the land to be annexed is 120 acres or less, the area to be annexed is not presently served by public wastewater facilities, and the municipality received a petition for annexation from all of the property owners of the land to be annexed. This method does not require the approval of the township, but does require public hearing by city council, and prior to the hearing, the city must give written notice 30 days prior to the hearing by certified mail to the township and all owners of adjacent property adjacent to the subject property, which was done. The subject property meets the criteria for annexation under the statute. It is in accordance with our comprehensive plan and future land use map, and city and water and sewer are available for development. One of the issues that was discussed in bringing this property into the city was just concerns by the neighboring landowner, which would then, upon annexation of this particular property, be surrounded and wholly within the city limits. With that circumstance, that would make that property subject to annexation as well by ordinance. There is no intention immediately to do that, but there are some concerns about having islands of property within the city. For instance, they would be subject to another jurisdiction, which allows the property to create nonconformities. They may engage in uses that are in conflict with city ordinance, and that would exempt them from general planning for the city overall, again, while wholly within, within the city limits. So, it's just something to consider with regard to future annexations. Just to go through the ordinance briefly and point out some of the major provisions, the property would be annexed into the city. The population is zero in that area. The property taxes would be payable to the township full amount this year. The city would reimburse two years, which is the minimum, half in 2020 and half in 2021. The total amount is 7,0615. The, again, the area would be zoned I-1 light industrial district, consistent with our comprehensive land use plan, and that's it, unless you have any questions.
Greg, you got an additional comment?
Yeah. Thank you, mayor members. Just to echo some of the comments that Ms. Wallace made, this is, we're acting upon the request from the property owner in this regard. We're really trying to position ourselves for growth from an economic development perspective. We're really trying to utilize our existing infrastructure and utilize those proper planning techniques that Ms. Wallace mentioned. We're also trying to learn from our previous development opportunities. I think the community widely knew about the possibility of a distribution center. This could have been an ideal spot for it as well. The end user preferred a different site, but from an infrastructure standpoint, this was much more advantageous for the investment both the city and public utilities has made in that area. This also builds on our other efforts of being shovel-ready on the Creekside Business Park. What we're really trying to do is position ourselves for growth. We recognize that development opportunities are very competitive. We've tried not to oversell this as being a silver bullet, but it's one step that we can do to position ourselves for that competitive environment. Every action that we've taken has been consistent with state statutes. We preferred working with the township, but we are choosing to exercise that based on the landowner's request and consistent with state statutes. I know the current property owners are interested in exploring a rural taxing district, something that we've given promising indication from, from council in the past. That's all I have.
Okay. I'd like to state that this is not a public hearing, but, Ms. Murphy, if you wish to address the council, I'm going to allow it, because it's an important issue for you. If you don't wish to address the council, that's fine, but I'm going to give you that opportunity if you so desire. Got to keep it civil, though. Can't be like that Lansing meeting. We're still trying to get a tape on that.
I don't understand why, when I was completely disrespected.
Actually, you have to speak up a little bit.
Anyway, my name is Mara Murphy. I do own the property on the corner. I see this as one neighbor bullying another neighbor, and the mere fact that I am completely surrounded now is nothing more than a bully tactic. This land, I don't believe needs to be annexed in at this point. If it is annexed in at this point, then my taxes will increase, and it's a mere slow attempt to move me off that land. Yes, it is my parents' land, and there are very great memories there. However, I have hopes and dreams, as well as all of you have hopes and dreams, in having the homes that you have. It is my home. It is my pasture. It is my barn. Vern Carrot is eighty-some years old. He has lived his dreams. What about the young people of this town? And what about the people who have given so much and been here to stand by this town when you keep bringing new people in, new businesses, and putting other businesses, family businesses, out of business?
I'd like you to kind of keep it to the topic we're talking about.
I don't think now is the time to annex my farm. I have said this many times and have been treated only with disrespect. I can't. It's just not right. It's unethical. It is not fair. It's not just, and it's unethical. And I would have thought that this council overall would have been acting with integrity and professionalism in this issue, and that has not been my experience. Again, I just don't think that now is the time, and it's nothing more than a bully tactic on the part of my neighbor.
Your neighbor's not annexing it. I mean, we're annexing the property, so, I mean, you could blame us. He's a businessman. I think we're doing it, a few comments, we're doing it for the young people. I mean, that's, we're trying to look ahead to have areas that we could possibly utilize.
There are many areas around this city that are shovel area. I never get to finish.
Well, you did finish, and I'll let you speak again. I'm not, you know, plus, we've reached out to you many times as far as discussing different taxes and how we can do it, and, you know, I mean, if you agree to, you know, if we have an agreement, we could put that, do different things with the taxes, and we've been rebuffed in everything, so.
Well, I can't exactly find a lawyer. They're all here in Austin. Everyone is connected.
Dr. Dave McKee, and he's tripping over them with the police car over there.
I don't know. I just, I had a lawyer in Rochester. They're busy. I've reached out to them. They go on vacations. Yes. I should have been a lawyer. I'm sorry?
I'll give you the last word on it. Go ahead.
I just don't think that now is the time.
Okay. Well, we recognize the distress that this is causing, and we're trying to be as nice as possible about it. Council, do we have any questions or comments?
Just for clarification, what's being proposed tonight does not affect Ms. Murphy's property.
No.
It's just a Carrot property that we're voting on tonight. Is that correct?
Holly?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
So, we're not annexing, you know, Ms. Murphy's property?
We're not requiring her to do anything at this time or in any time in the near future, are we?
Nope.
As far as annexation goes. Right. I guess the only thing I'd add is, and we've, we've shared that with, when we were at Lansing Township, that state statutes does allow then for a part, as Ms. Wallace mentioned, if it's encircled by the municipality, we have ability to annex that by ordinance as well, over the objection of the property owner, and that was our recommendation before Lansing Township and continues to be our recommendation. So, to the extent that it impacts your decision on this annexation, I guess that would be something you'd want to know.
Right. We want to be clear about that. I mean, we're doing it. It'll be easier in the future for us to annex your property because of this. I mean, we're, let's be honest about that, and we're not saying that's not going to happen, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. And then, we don't have anything in the foreseeable future that would cause that, but, you know, obviously, we need to do what we need to do for the city.
Well, and at the end of the day, the landowner still makes the decision about whether to sell or not, right?
Right.
Even regardless of what would happen with annexation, they make the decision about if they would sell their land.
There is not a scenario that I can envision or that we've talked about that would do anything to try and take her property away from her. It's going to affect her taxes, yes. That's a legitimate, you know, thing that's going to happen that I can see why she wouldn't be happy, but as far as that property, she'll have that property forever as far as, you know, I could, I don't see any scenario where she'd lose her property. Council? All right. If there's no more questions, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
Move that the ordinance be prepared.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Fourteen B, we need an ordinance or, we need an ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a motion for reviewing a plat for nature's rid, second edition. Ms. Wallace.
Your honor and council, after the planning commission recommendation, the developer asked to have the meeting continued to June 3rd, 2019, while they reassess the feasibility of their project.
Council, any questions or comments? If not, we need a motion for fifteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Sixteen is a motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at 302 Second removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at 302 Second Street Southeast, the Martel property. We need a motion.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And our final motion at 17 is a motion for granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power, contract for repair and/or removal of a fence located at 1008 12th Avenue Southwest. Any questions on that? If not, we need a motion.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Are there any citizens here tonight that wish to address the council on anything? Anything? Okay. And Solomon, this is where we're at honorary council member comments. What do you got for us? You're kind of a rookie at this, so I don't, we don't expect a lot, you know?
I was thinking big detail PowerPoint.
Yeah. Right. I mean, you've got a notebook full of something for us, or keep it to like 10 minutes.
You wanna give them the microphone?
Tell us, you know, Solomon, tell us a little bit about yourself.
First of all, I want to thank the council and the mayor for the opportunity to serve. I'm always passionate about public service, and I came to this city 13 years ago from Portland, Maine. I came to the country as a refugee about 20 years ago, next month. I was born a refugee myself. My parents fled the country, Sudan, in the late 60s because the war started right after independence in 1956, and became refugees in Ethiopia. So, I was born a refugee in a country that does not bestow citizenship by birth. In order to be an Ethiopian citizen at the time of my birth, one of your parent has to be an Ethiopian. Both of my parents were refugees in Ethiopia, so I could not become Ethiopian citizenship by birth. So, I lived 18 years of my life in Ethiopia as a refugee, and because of the generosity of this country, I was granted a recruitment opportunity to come here as a refugee, live for five years in Portland, Maine, try as much as I could to stay out of trouble except for speeding ticket, and then apply for citizenship and became a United States citizen in 2004. I have all my children born in this country, and my second child in 2011, when South Sudan gained its independence from the north during, after all that protracted war, I came home in the evening, and you already watch it on the news, and it's like, oh, Dad, you finally have a country. And I'm like, how about you? He said, she's, and then she said, I'm from Portland, Maine. And, and she's right. She's from Portland, Maine, only a Sudanese by heritage, but an American as they come. And I couldn't be happier for that opportunity, and I always remind them that the only excuse for them to ever miss an election is if they are in a coma. Because if they just sick in a hospital bed, it shouldn't be an excuse. They can still vote absentee. And when I swore oath to this country for the very first time, I was so emotional that something that my parents were denied of all their entire life here, United States became my first country of citizenship, that gave me an ID card and then a passport, and now I can say I'm a citizen of a particular country, which I thought would never come at one point in my life. So, I thought I would never be any more emotional than that, only to vote for the first time. My first election was 2006, and I voted every single election. So, to all of you that are here, if you ever miss an election, please take it from me. I don't care who you vote for, but please take it from me. Do not ever miss an election. Okay? Coming to my opportunity to come and serve here at the city council in this position, I couldn't be more grateful, and I look forward to learning more about city council. The proceeding is so fast for me, especially the motion and then approve, and I don't know why all the votes start with her and then end with the adult.
Come back next time. It'll be different.
They'll start with her, and they'll still end with me.
And that's, and that's all I'm looking forward to serve. As far as the police, civil commission, my first interaction, close interaction with the police was when I joined the Citizen Academy with Ali and Mike Portsmouth, and it was my first time to target shoot. And somewhere southwest out over there, and it was my first time to target shoot, and every time I fired, I shook, and the officer tried to hold me close to learn how to shoot. And ever since, I wanted to know more and more about police work and everything on the news, and only to come and appreciate them every day for what they do, because back home, when you see an officer, you run as far as you could instead of running to them for help. It's the opposite kind of work. So, I want to come and learn close, listen, and be a voice and bring other perspective to them that I have brought to the captain before he became the chief. And I would like to inform more other people here about our immigrant community here perceive and interact our, with our law enforcement. And take it from me, after 13 years in this country, Austin has changed tenfold, tenfold as a person of color for the better. And this is not by accident. Vision 2020 has something to do with it. Captain McKicken at Apex Meeting has a lot to do with it by how he inform the forces. And we doing our part at the Welcome Center now and at other community events to inform our people that it's not for them to be mean, but officers here are taught to exude power. Can I have your ID, please? It doesn't mean they being mean to you, they just want you to submit to, to them for that reason. It is your reaction that bring about the negative things that happen. Yes, 99.9% of them, I would say they join to serve, but there is that 1% that joined because of the gun, and that's because of power. So, my appreciation and my community appreciation with the interaction with the police community, with our law enforcement community has changed more than tenfold for the better. So, I couldn't be happier to call myself a resident of this place forever. I finally bought a house and I foresee myself to live here forever. So, I am not an immigrant anymore or a visitor, so I'm just as neighbor as they come, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, Solomon, there are still people in this country that run as fast as they can when they see the police, trust me. They're not gonna be sitting in here. We're fortunate to have you there, and we're just fortunate to have you. I think when we envisioned this program, a lot of people had you in mind, so it's a real good fit, and we look forward to working with you. Let's start with Paul tonight.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jason?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Laura?
A couple of things. I want to advise the public that Jim Wagner has a art exhibit at the Art Work Center right now. It'll be up for two more weeks. I like to describe him as Austin's OG artist. He's been around for a long time. Lots of people know him through his teaching at the college and before that in the school district. And he's coming to a point in his life where he wants a lot of his artwork to find new homes. It's kind of like letting your babies out into the world, and so, we've seen the paintings kinda fly off the walls, and if you wanna have your own painting from Jim Wagner, an Austin icon, now is the time. So, it'll be up for two more weeks. I also want you to mark your calendars for Wednesday, June 12th. That'll be our second annual Fourth Avenue Fest. There will be free music, there will be open swim for free, there will be canoeing and kayaking on Mill Pond for free, and art-making activities. Facebook will have lots of information on it, but it's a joint project of the city and Austin area arts, and last year, I think it might've been the nicest weather night all summer, so we expect, of course, the same thing this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephen, I wasn't able to participate in the electronics recycling, but how did it go?
I was not either.
Oh, okay.
But what I, I was not either, but I heard it went well. I think I was hearing that we had, again, four to five semi-loads of electronics, which kinda seems where we've leveled off at over the last few years. Again, we had good response with volunteers in the morning. That's kinda the, the harder shift when the slug of cars come in, and then volunteers tapered off a little bit later, but that's when the cars tend to taper off as well. So, from the folks that I did talk to, it, it went well.
Good. Thank you. That's all I had, Your Honor.
Rebecca?
Nothing.
You? I'd just like to welcome Solomon. Steve King, so you can... I'd like to welcome Solomon. I've known Solomon for many years, and I've said it out loud, and I've said it to his face. He is probably the biggest gift to Austin I can imagine. Just his personality and his, and his, the way, his demeanor, his intelligence, he is just a gift to the community, so I appreciate him working with us as honorary counsel.
Gonna be catch line in there somewhere.
No, that's it.
Well, thank you, Steve. Thank you. Joyce?
Nothing. Thank you.
I don't have anything. I think Julie had an item.
Okay.
I just wanted to let people know that at the library tomorrow night at 6:30, we have our One Austin Many Stories series. We have a filmmaker who's going to be there. He was here in January doing one of his other films, and this one is Evanston's Living History. It's a film and discussion with Craig Dundick, and it's, it's gonna be great. He came, like I said, in January, and it was a really great film. We didn't have too many people there because the weather was bad, so hopefully tomorrow the weather will be nice enough to get there, but not so nice that you wanna go out and do other things. So, come to the library, it's about 6:30 tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Any, nobody has anything else? We need a motion to adjourn to Monday, June 3rd, 2019 at 5:30 in Council Chamber.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a short break, we'll meet in the conference room across the hall for our bi-monthly work session.